You can mute if needed. Um, sorry, everybody's here, right? I can't see anything right now. I should.
Are you getting feedback from me?
Yes, there's an echo.
There's just a little echo to you, John.
More the echo. I think we're okay. So with that, I would like to start our study session today, June 20th, 2020. Um, sorry, it's it's a little early after a lot of meetings yesterday. Um, and so with that, today's agenda is, as all of you know, so I'd like to say that all five board members are here. We are meeting virtually remotely, as required by the governor's proclamation. For anybody who is interested, we also, you can call in and hopefully Diane or John happen to have that phone number that they could say it because I do not have it handy at this moment.
Yes, I have the phone number. It's 425-936-2805. Meeting ID 471683-Pound. A pound is also known as a hashtag these days.
So you can do that. You can also go to our website, watch it live, and it will also be videotaped. So it could be caught later if you would like as well. So with that, I'd like to just start, our plan for today is really just to sort of go over the board work plan for next year. So this gives us our opportunity with Dr. Holman coming on as the superintendent come July 1. This gives us that opportunity to sort of set what that plan is for the upcoming year as we haven't had that opportunity with the additional work staff has been doing and everybody, the community, and then not only with dealing with the spring quarter and working through that, but also then preparing for summer and then with a return to school in the fall and what that looks like in the different scenarios. So this is the next piece. So this is just a component. So as we think about this work plan and, and Dr. Holman has set up a, a power, process in which to walk us through to really think about these key issues. Remember that we are also in the midst of the pandemic at the same time. So that will also be impacting how we look at that work plan and maybe even what the priorities are in different ways that they might not have been going forward and that we are always within policy. So just thinking about those things, just want to put that out. And with that, are you all good with the agenda? Did we miss anything? I don't see anything. I only see Eric right now. Where'd everybody go? I hate the iPad. I'm on an iPad and for whatever reason, it doesn't interface as well with Teams. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Holman.
Great.
And we will go from there.
Okay. And when I think about our work today, it's really about dialogue today so that then I can package this conversation into a work plan that I'll bring back to you in August so that we can finalize, make any adjustments as we plan for next year. When I think about the components of the conversation today, it's about, yes, the technical aspects of a board meeting schedule and whatnot, but really it's more about what are the, what's the learning the board wants to do? What's the policy work the board wants to do? What are the kind of key topics in any areas that the board wants to address? What are the key community groups, members, areas that the board wants to engage with through linkage processes this year? So that we can actually start building those plans out because if we want to actually bring professional learning to the board, that takes time to schedule and plan, not only with the board, but with anyone that we bring in or if we have staff do that. If we want to participate in linkage processes, that's a relatively extensive process because it's actually bringing people in whether it's remotely or live in person and we need to, there's significant scheduling and processes that need to go into that. And so getting those things relatively squared away early in the, the calendar year allows us to put plans in place and actually have really effective either professional learning or linkage opportunities. Before we get into the, the conversation, one of the things I did was I put a, I put it into a PowerPoint just because it kind of helped me think through the work of the board as I then also work with our cabinet in thinking about how do we support the board in their work of governance of the district? And so I want to walk through a few slides which aren't intended for presentation per se, but it's more just to get us all thinking about what is the work of the board? And then what pieces might we think are potentially missing? What pieces do we think the board needs additional work, effort, learning around? So that you can do your job as effectively as possible in governing the school district. And so I'm going to share my screen and I'm not going to put it into a presentation mode. I'm just going to keep it in this format. Okay. And just kind of walk through a few slides and some, some things I've been thinking about in terms of the board's work. I think it is always important for all of us to continually remind ourselves that our work is always grounded and aimed at our mission and vision for students. And that is a key part of the work of the board because when you think about the board's governance role, it's really about ensuring that the district has that continual urgency and push to do better for students. And so when you think about our mission of graduating each and every student, there's a lot of systems and supports that go into actually really attempting to graduate 100% of our students. When you think about all of the academic work, all of the social emotional learning work, the mental health support, it goes on and on. To actually work towards accomplishing our mission, that is an entire system shifting. I think as we also talk about some of the racial equity work that we've done and want to continue doing and enhance, that plays right into the accomplishment of our, our mission. And when you think about our vision, it's a very rigorous vision because it's about preparing students for their future. And we are partners in that because we know there's so many parts and pieces to our students being prepared for their future. But what is within our control? It is critical to have that urgency so that they are making choices for themselves as they go into their future. We want them to be prepared for college so that they can make that choice if they want. We want them to be workplace ready because we know the skills and attributes needed for current workers. They're different than they ever have been before and we're preparing them for workplaces that we actually don't know of today. And then when you think about personal success, we want our students to know how to be happy in their lives. And I think that's a, a key part in our preparation.
So John, I see that Director Carlson has his hand raised.
Great.
So Chris, do you have something you want to say?
Very simple thing. John, I'm on a tiny screen. Can you turn that into presentation mode so I'm not looking at PowerPoint and I'm just looking at your slide?
Yep. So let me unshare. Yep, let me unshare and then I'll. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Okay. And so then when I think about the, kind of the next, the next layer down, it's really about the board's values. And in our governance structure, the board really leads with values and assures that the work of the organization is directly connected to your values. So as you look through these, these are all pulled from the operational expectations. So these are the, in the OEs, these are statements that you are already making around the values that the board holds. And if you just take a minute to read through some of these, I think they will speak to you, but I also, when I read through these, believe that there's potentially some additional work around our, our equity work, our racial equity work, because while it's embedded in some of these, I believe it's also somewhat absent. And so that's just something that as the board is thinking about your values, because that's really is kind of the proclamation to the organization, the community as to what you're holding the district accountable for. And I believe, you know, I've heard the dialogue for, for many years from the board and your commitment to students and equity and assuring that students in a number of areas, marginalized students, that they have the supports needed to be able to be successful. And so that's one of the things that I've just thought about. And so it's, it's interesting to list out your OEs in this manner because it, it's a very succinct way to get a holistic picture. If you remember a few years ago, and I left this, this in because we haven't talked about it a lot, but this was some work the board did at our March study session and really wanting to capture some ideals that the board continued to focus on, and those were opportunity and equity, innovation and improvement. And while my wonder is, do we do a better job of embedding these into the OEs and the values there? This is something that the board put work into. So I would just wanted to remind us that, that this was here. This is in the, kind of the history of this school board particularly because you really wanted to make sure that you called out these, these pieces as things that the board really cared about. And then when I think about the results that you have stated, I really kind of think about them as expectations, if you will. And so when you think about our results, those are statements that the board is making to the organization and you are expecting each student will graduate. You're expecting that each student will demonstrate mastery of content. You're expecting that each student will develop attributes necessary. So those are all expectations that the board has and we report on those so that you can monitor the overall organization's success.
So John, Mark has his hand raised.
Oh, thank you.
No, I just wanted to point out that I think that there's several points in the, if we go back to the list, John, about two slides back, values, I think it was.
So he's put it up, the school board values. Are you speaking to Mark?
I'm just thinking that we can, that there's several points in there that we can refer to our equity work as opposed to redoing the whole thing. You want to go back a couple of slides perhaps?
So it's on the value slide. It may just take a second to get caught up.
Okay, no problem, no problem. I thought maybe it was me.
Yeah, no, and I definitely wouldn't recommend redoing all the policies. I just want to make sure that the,
No.
That value is.
The very first one, to be quite frank. I think the very first one would be a very, first of all, it's the idea to have it up top. But second of all, it's probably the most appropriate one to put it in.
Yep.
The equity portion and to have it up front. There may be other opportunities to, but there we go, there we go. Yeah, I think we, there's equity is easily and should be inserted in bullets one and two. It's actually go into the honest appraisal of significant issues and concerns. Going to save some respect for as well.
Well, and.
I don't know how, but you want to drum it in because it may, it sounds like it's being a little patronizing then.
So what I, what I will say is I, I think that what you're highlighting is that it isn't as clearly stated within our school board values. The value of equity and opportunity. And so that's something for us to think about. How do we want to build that in, in the different ways? We had talked about equity policy at some point, you know, that has been partially developed at this time, but never fully approved. So that's another piece of that.
I think we also ought to have and post on the, front of the website, a statement of equity as well. So it's out front, very not visible, but it's something that everyone will see every time they come on the website. But again, we got to write it first.
Yes.
Details, details.
Yeah. And so, you know, one of the, one of the challenges always with the equity work is if it's not embedded into absolutely everything we do, then you really aren't moving or changing a system. You're addressing maybe bits and pieces of it. And I know as, as our community looks at our board and organization, we want them to explicitly know that we have a commitment to equity and continuing to work on the system. And so I think that's.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm pointing out as we, as we think about this and the work for the year. I know the board had an interest in participating in the district's equity training, which was delayed, canceled due to the, the closure and whatnot. So just a couple more pieces. I think the, the other thing that we're, we're always monitoring in the work plan of the board is how we bring our monitoring results and operational expectations to the board. And so we've thought through when we bring those to the board this year and in what order. For us, that's also an important part. We think this is about a month behind what we typically would recommend with results three coming in December, results two coming in January and results one coming in February. We really think probably results three could come around November in the future, but just with reopening of school and the data around these results is going to be much different than it was in the past, knowing that we're, we're going to have a gap in our typical data cycles. And so that's why we're recommending this. Also having it in reverse order, when you think about results one, that really is the culmination of all of the efforts that lead to results two and three. And so placing that at the end of the results monitoring for us makes the most sense. And then for our operational expectations, I think it's a pretty standard layout of our monitoring cycle for these. Staff provided input around this and felt this was definitely within the scope of when the data is available and, and whatnot. And so that's another part of the work plan. Another piece, and these are all things that we can spend more time talking. I just wanted to, to give you kind of an overview of what I was thinking about. When Siri and I met probably a month ago, we talked about, you know, the board has had a strong interest in doing linkage with the community. And my comment was, let's get them on the calendar so that staff can work on them. And it would be better to have, have them on the calendar, do them, learn from the, the experience rather than spinning and continuing to talk about something that we want to do, knowing that anytime you get in the room with community members or stakeholder groups, as a board, you're going to learn from them, you're going to broaden your perspective and that's really, really helpful. And so when I think about opportunities to do key linkages, these were just four. And I don't know if you can see the, the last one in the corner or if you're seeing Siri like I am down here. So my, my screen, I have one, one person that I'm seeing the, the live video of and that's just the way it is. So if you can see the, that last, that last box, I cannot. But I was thinking, you know, kind of placing these throughout the year and making sure that we address topics that the board has expressed interest in over time. Thinking that it would be great for the board to interface with our district equity advisory team. They've done a lot of work over the last few years. I think they have a lot of good feedback, thoughts and ideas that would help the board as you're thinking about your equity work, your lens on equity and racial equity within Lake Washington and, and hearing from that group. I also think about continuing to engage with our special education families is going to continue to allow us to do even better work around our inclusion and and instructional programs for our students with special needs. And then when I think about a group that probably we haven't engaged with before is our athletics and activity groups. And so knowing that we have many, many families that, you know, their connection to the school district is through either an athletic program or an activities program and potentially engaging with our boosters. And then that last, that last engagement and linkage is really a focus on students. And so connecting with them and hearing directly from them. My thought was to have these before our study sessions on four of our meeting dates from four to five. And so that's, that's something we can talk about and dialogue about. So with that, I will open this up for conversation. I think what would, what would be probably most beneficial is to kind of take some, some of these areas and discuss them. And maybe the, the first is really the professional learning of the board and the interest that the board has in learning as you think about the work that you've done in the past that was on the schedule and moving forward.
All right, Mark, I see your hand is up.
Yes, John, I appreciate the idea that you're trying to roll the linkages into the same night as the board meetings. So it's basically doing two things. One is not taking an extra night or whatever of the board, but also it's hopefully setting up people to actually attend the board meeting. However, that four to 5:00 PM timeframe, I think we're going to find that very difficult for parents. One, they're either still on their way home from work, at work, or they're getting ready to prepare dinner for their family. I just think it, it limits us to the scope of, of people that we can actually have attend the meeting. Kind of limits just to those that are a little more privileged perhaps because they don't have to worry about getting home from the office or the store or whatever.
And Cassandra?
Sorry, I forgot I was muted. I'm wondering if, I realize that this is an easy timeframe for us and we can capture so much working from four o'clock until the end. I'm wondering though if one or all of the meetings could be held in a different location so that parents who are unable to get to the district office if we're alive would be able to more easily participate.
Are you thinking about the linkages?
Yes, sorry.
Yep.
So as the conversation seems to be focused on that component at this moment, it sounds like everybody is in agreement that they would like linkages. Is that fair, Chris and Eric? You are the two I haven't heard.
Yeah. I'm sort of thinking about this. I think about what the purpose of the linkages are for the board. And I think it's, when I think about it, it's to, it's for the board to hear different perspectives that we may, to collectively hear the different perspectives at the same time so that we can maybe think about our policies differently. So I do think, I do think it makes sense. It makes, I know that every time we've done one, it's, it's, you know, it's made me think about something a little bit differently than I had before, or it's opened my eyes to something that I hadn't thought about before. And when I think about that, you know, that the work that we're trying to do, what it's trying to influence, the one, the one of the, of the proposals that I'm trying to figure out how it would work into the work of the board is the, is the meeting with our activities and athletics groups and the boosters. I, I agree that's a group we have never, we have never, at least I've never engaged with. Well, I've been on the board or we've never engaged with, well, I've been on the board. But I wonder, I'm just trying to think what, what it is the board at a policy level would be and what we would learn that would influence our work at a policy level as to, opposed to, I mean, so much of what happens is at the operational level, at least I feel with those group. So I just kind of, I want to be thoughtful about that before we spend the time doing it.
So, so the one thing to think about, at least as I look through those linkages and thought about them is the one place with athletics and extracurricular is from an equity side. How well do we effectively, so if you actually sort of maintain a theme that goes across the board? Are we effectively reaching all our students of all different abilities, interests across the board geographically? And so that conversation is around that piece as opposed to, do you, so I'd be intrigued as I look at those linkages, I would, it's almost, you know, like when I think of the equity piece, I would love to do that not just with the equity advisory team, but then I'd like a group of students to talk to us about how it plays out in their classroom. I'd like to talk to a group of parents and hear how that plays out differently in, in that. So I guess I could see, you know, like, like each quarter, do we take something and, and sort of do? I'm concerned about only an hour. I'll be honest. I find that a very short time. Usually I find at least an hour and a half. I know most focus groups are an hour and a half is what I think about usually. And I'm concerned about a four to five timeframe more just because that also then sets us up for four till nine and I am not necessarily at my best at hour five. So I prefer to be able to put that on to a different timeframe. If that means a different day, if that means however we would do it. Or if that's our study session, because that's how we build it in. So one of the study sessions every month is that. That's another option, but.
So I guess just to, thank you, Siri. I, I, just to tie off what I was saying, I've thought about it more since you educated me. You know, I think, I guess I think it's, I'd answer your question. I think that these are important. These, I do want to do linkages, but I want to make sure that, that the work, that the linkages are feeding back into the work of the board and that we're actually using them for something. Just because I think that's a good use of time. And I also think that if we're going to take the time, if people are going to take the time out of their days to engage with us, it needs to have a purpose. It needs to actually do something. I think we, they deserve that. Eric, I think the community deserves that as well.
You know, Siri, can I also add to the reason to engage with our athletics and activities groups is also when you think about student engagement and connection to school. Some students have that connection through their academic program. They find a STEM program really engaging and rigorous. I mean, that's their connection point. There's other students that their connection point to school is through the music program or their athletic activity that they participate in, you know, if it wasn't for basketball, they wouldn't feel as connected. And so it's also about that results three and in kind of the building of kind of the other types of skills that we know are important for our students because a lot of those skills are addressed in our athletics and activities programs. And so it's also how we engage students, how we connect with students. And it's really something that our schools take seriously in really trying to make sure every student has a connection point that is meaningful and really is inspiring for them. And so that was my thinking around that and we could build that out to make sure that it's answering the right question. But I think, thinking about that group, because they're a wealth of knowledge and they are, they are highly engaged in our schools and a key piece of our schools. And so hearing a perspective from them may be really important. And we can build that out to include others, not just boosters around athletics and activities.
Okay, so we have three people. So I have Cassandra, Chris and Mark. So how about Chris first, just because we haven't heard, and then Cassandra and Mark. And I'm going to say it's a little hard because I can't see things very well. So go ahead and sort of pop in when you think it sort of works and we'll see how that plays out.
My hand is not up. My hand is not up right now.
I don't see it is on.
Yeah. So I.
I see your hand.
I just wanted to, that I, with Eric on this, that to, when we schedule a, 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 a clear connection, not just to our values, but to the work of the board, to, to the policy work. And that said, I actually can, I can imagine it's just not explicit, each of the four groups, where that connection is for the proposed four linkage sessions. I think the idea of doing it at four, I, I can make it work. It's something that right now I feel like, gosh, why do we have? It's something that, right now I feel like, gosh, why do we have to wait till next June to talk to our seniors? So I don't know if there's a way to perhaps move them around. Uh, I, I mean, I don't want to, to front load them, to have the linkage sessions not necessarily be spaced evenly across our work year, but to have a few more of them in the beginning of next year than we would normally have. But I think that a, a total of perhaps four across the year is totally reasonable. And I think that the three out of these four would have been in my top four and I can work with that. So, um, that's all I have to say on the topic.
And Mark? We have lost Mark.
You're on mute, Mark, I can't hear you.
Sorry, it was muted.
Okay, there we go.
To, uh, to Eric's point, uh, Eric, I think part of the thing that some folks have addressed a little bit of it, you can instill the equity portion into this because, uh, we have a lot of clubs, if you will, that are trying to fill the gap for the lack of equity in the classroom areas. There's not a, a discussion or there's not curriculum built into certain areas. And so it's addressed those areas by having clubs. Maybe we find out, especially as we're, uh, we do that not only with the boosters, but have the students involved there too. Because, uh, looking at, you know, am I getting enough from that club? Am I getting enough from that after, after school activity that perhaps I really should be getting in the classroom? And I think that along with the discussion of equity and athletics would be a, a boost for us. But again, I would not only have the boosters, but I'd have some of the students too. That's all.
Yeah, that seems like a common theme in all of these is to make sure that we have a, have student voice as part of them.
Yes, as I say, that has been discussed as I went back and actually looked at our plan for this year. Student voice was definitely one in which to build in and it, it did not get the, the attention that we would have hoped, but that was also because other things had to. But that's, right now is a perfect time to start bringing that back in.
Yeah, and I, you know, you learn through these experiences such as the closure, you learn things. And what we know is we may need to have a student participation in our linkages, like in this format. But that's doable, we can set that up, we can figure those pieces out because we know our, if they're participating in athletics and activities, there's a potential they may not be available when, when we want them to participate. But maybe they could jump on a teams meeting and participate remotely in that venue. So we also can be thoughtful about how we get that voice into the room when we're all there.
So any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I heard a couple, a couple different comments around timing. I heard four to five was okay. I heard potentially use a study session time for that. I'm open to either of those. I think I also heard hold it on a different day. I heard hold it off site. So I just want to make sure I have clear kind of consensus from the board on those things. So when I bring back the, the recommended work plan, that it's in alignment with what the board is thinking.
All right, so go guys, what are you thinking?
Will you say that again?
Hello?
Mark?
The, uh, one thought I had, since we may still be in COVID anyway, and it may be a moot point. Uh, I've noticed that in the parent groups that I've been meeting with, or the, the PTSA meeting for the special needs, we had triple the number of participants by having it on the Zoom or whatever it was on, to be quite frank. And I think that really enhanced the parent participation because they didn't have to get out of the house. They, they weren't tied down, uh, they didn't have to rush home to work, uh, from work, rush, uh, and then rush to a meeting. I just think it, it may maybe require a lot more work to, uh, to link it all together, especially since we do individual tables, but I think it can be done.
Yeah, there's, uh, you know, when, just to reflect on that, when we're meeting with our administrators, we will, like if there's multiple kind of stops for us centrally with our administrators, we'll just set up a teams meeting for kind of unique groups, maybe an elementary group, a middle school group, a high school group. And then we have the, the elementary administrators stay in that meeting and then we go into that meeting. We leave that meeting, go to the middle school meeting. So there's definitely ways to do that. I also know there's other platforms that have other ways to do that. But we definitely could structure that to make sure that we have more people. Because I think that's the key part is having a, a good representative voice for the board to hear from so that you're getting a, a complete, as complete a picture as you can for any topic that you're participating in a linkage around. Great point.
The, uh, the equity meeting that we had, that second of the equity and the state meeting that we had, they were able to, uh, once they had a journalist session, uh, at certain points break into conversation sections. So I think that would be, if they can easily do it, there's no reason we shouldn't be able to do it. And then they would pop back to the general section.
So, so my question is to, to all of you, is that something that we want to pursue and go ahead and set up a virtual? I mean, that's what I'm hearing. And so I'm just checking to see, like Eric, would you nod your head that yes or no?
To which part? I think an hour is good, virtual is fine.
Okay, and Chris and Cassandra?
Ninety minutes.
Ninety minutes is fine too. I just, I think like when things stretch to two hours, I, I don't know.
I think ninety minutes is a pretty standard time, honestly.
I could live with ninety minutes because that's, you don't need a potty break. You go to two hours, you're going to start getting the paperwork, people get restless.
Think for yourself about the ninety minutes.
And so then the other question, so the other things that, um, sort of had popcorned around. You had the, do we do it, do you want them on Mondays? Do we do it at a different time? Just so that they can go forward and make plans.
Mondays.
I think we still may run into the time issue if people are trying to, if people actually go to work and get to come back again now to their home instead of working from home, that could be problematic. But, you know, we really need to hear from the community what works for people.
So another option, as I'm kind of thinking through all of these pieces on those, if we want to use a Monday and we want to make sure it's at a time where people are more available, we could flip the study session and board meeting, have an early board meeting that night, uh, do the business of the board and then have the linkage starting at, you know, six thirty or seven o'clock, whenever that right time is. So it gives people a chance to transition from work and get kids squared away and potentially be available.
In a lot of ways, I like that concept.
So that would still stay on a Monday then and continue that way. Okay. Typically, our second board meeting tends to be a little less. It has not been true this year. However, it's usually, can be a much more business meeting where we're just trying to get the clear business pieces through. Um, and that would give that opportunity to be able to hold a longer discussion and things.
Great, okay, I think I, and if there's, do we want to discuss topics real quick just to make sure that we're all clear on the topics that we want to address?
Yes, and then there was one other logistic piece. Cassandra had mentioned about meeting off site and doing it not necessarily at the resource center. I think if it's tied to a board meeting, that makes it much more difficult. In that regard, unless we move our whole board meeting, which I guess that's possible too, people do.
Well, if we're still, um, in a phase two, maybe three, I think meeting virtually makes sense. But as we open up, maybe further into the school year, then I, I think it's important to go to people when we can because even in a virtual meeting, you lose, you know, a lot just from understanding other point of view, from body language, from being able to hold a conversation without wondering, is this my turn? Am I, um, but I don't feel like we are at that point right now, obviously. And even though we're now phase two, I don't think we're quite there yet.
So can I clarify, Cassandra, you, you just said go to people. My inclination is that because it's a district and it's district work, that these linkage sessions, that we bring them to us rather than us going off site unless we were going to a specific site for a specific purpose. Not least because it required me to remember where the heck I was going on a given Monday night.
I can see that, I have that every day. Where am I going today? What am I doing today? What's on that calendar? Uh, I feel like the people we're not hearing from, there's a reason. And I personally try to go out and meet with people instead of expect them to come to me.
And, and I would, I would actually second that concept of being able, but I'm not, I think there are, you could do it in multiple, right? So there's the piece that's a much more formal at the resource center and that. Then there could also potentially be that you are hitting some of those groups during their meetings, right? And trying to build off of that and utilize that space. And so it wouldn't be on a Monday night, it would be more at their convenience of how it works. And we sort of, we want, if we want to learn more about experience of our students within our schools, maybe we go to each high school and be able to actually meet with them at the high schools and talk to them there.
And all grade levels could come to a meeting at the high school.
You know, there's the other way.
As well, right?
The other way I think about linkage, there's a very formal structure of linkage that we're talking about. And then there's the, if you will, informal that as an individual board member, you may be interfacing with a specific group, uh, community members and whatnot, that you then bring that voice back to the board. I think that's a perfect place for board comment to just reflect on the experiences that you're having with community groups. Because that also then helps build out the capacity of the board. Because then you're having an experience, bringing it back to the board. And that's kind of that, you know, little L linkage, if you will. But it still is extremely beneficial, meaningful, and it really matters because having board members interface with the community and then kind of sharing the, that experience, but also the learning from that experience, I think is important as well. And so kind of what you're getting after Cassandra, you know, we, we have community engagement that's occurring all the time, whether it's in our schools, whether it's in the community. And I think another opportunity would be to say, what are, what are the things the district is actually doing in the community? And how do we connect board members to those so that you're also seeing and hearing from that as you're thinking about your governance role and whatnot? So that's another way to establish linkages.
I'll try and do whatever we can to be where the community and parents and students are and try and understand perspectives and get a better idea for, oh, these are some of the, you know, points that are blocking them from doing X, Y, Z, think about things from a different angle. But I do think if we're doing like individual attendance for an informal linkage, we're not necessarily getting to the topics, our four main topics that we have listed. I mean, perhaps they would allow a board member to ask a few questions while we were there. So it will be anecdotal backing up whatever else that we're doing that's teams that people can participate in.
Yeah, and to the point of going to other locations, what we, what we know and what we hear is that there are families that don't feel that they are able to actually show up in our spaces yet. And that's for a variety of reasons, transportation, maybe they don't feel welcome, maybe they don't know how. Maybe they're coming from a place where engaging with your school system just wasn't even part of the process. And so they just wouldn't even think to engage with the school system. So there's all sorts of reasons why people, uh, don't show up. And I think it's also important for us to understand those reasons and then reach out to them. So, great point.
So John, you had mentioned wanting to talk about the theme, the topics.
And so what I heard about that first equity topic, it really was more than just the equity advisory team. It was equity advisory plus students, parents and educators. So that's,
Yeah.
So that's what I heard.
And I'm not sure if we can do that all in one, I mean, my concern is can you really do that all in one night? Or does that actually have to be done as a, um, I know when I had spoke with the Issaquah Board with, when they did their equity policy, some of the work that they really did around that was they did very targeted groups with their students of color, with their parents, with teacher, with staff, and so not just teachers across the board. And really sort of, let's learn what's going on and what's happening and get this perspective as we build this policy, which gets to Eric's point, let's make sure that what we do ties into the work that we're doing. And so this is the, how do we make sure we build all those pieces through? So, yes, I think it's, I mean, and they definitely have a key piece. I just think the student piece isn't on our district equity committee at this point.
Right, and so maybe that's another way to phrase the question is, do we want really a very focused, targeted theme for linkages this year around equity and opportunity?
And we, I think it's in everything we do. So I think anytime the district or the board decides to focus on a subject, issue, concern, that is, I mean, for me, and I think for all of us, that is always woven into what we're doing. But we need, we also need to have those specifics where we're drilling down deeper and understanding, well, you know, what, what is your, what's impacting your ability to participate as a student, as family, as community, et cetera.
I think the other piece of the equity work for me is I completely agree that it's embedded in everything we do. And as, I believe, six Caucasian individuals, the board and myself, it is, it's really important for us to be intentional about understanding what does it mean to be a person of color in our school district? Like, what does that feel like? What is that experience? And what systems have you experienced that actually continue to marginalize populations in our, in our district? And so, uh, I completely agree. If we're not doing the equity work across every band in our district, in absolutely everything we do, then we are missing opportunities and we're kind of continuing systems that don't support students to the greatest degree. And it's important that we have a targeted focus on actually understanding the components of racial equity as they apply to our school district.
And I also think that, you know, some of us on the board have biracial children, some of us have disabled children, some of us have cognitively delayed children whose experience is very different than what I look like when I sit on the board and talk to people. And, you know, those are some points that we, you know, need to eventually get to, the biracial experience. And I think all equity work will pull this together, but you're right, that's not what you see when you look at our board.
So Mark and Chris, you both had your hand up.
Yeah, when you envisioned us going, having linkages not in the, the district building, and I hear people talking about going to this high school or that high school for the meeting, are we only then focusing on that high school for the linkage? Because to expect someone to go from Juanita to Eastlake or from, uh, you know, that's the two most extreme points, I think, to be quite frank. I think that cuts us down as to participation. It basically limits it to the participation at that school of those parents.
I go places all over all year long, so to me, no, that's not enough for me. But if you're trying to meet with a group and have a specific topic, I think we're much more likely to get better attendance and build community going out to different events in those feeder areas than expecting people to come to us.
No, I have no problem with us going out to those various locations. I'm just thinking you're not going to get parents going. I'm just thinking you're not going to get parents going from one school to the other unless you're just focusing on that school for that night. I don't think you're going to get parents to go from one end of the district to the other. As inconvenient as the downtown meeting or location is, it's central in a lot of ways. Probably the farthest from it would be Eastlake.
So much of it would depend on the purpose of that gathering? And so who is coming forward? So that's exactly what you're speaking to, right? That if you're trying to gather the whole district to then possibly do it at Juanita could be a high travel challenge if everybody's back working and we have our traffic back. Right now it's really fast.
We've got a, one of the things that we're grappling with is, yeah, sorry. I, 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 just chiming in on this one. My concern about going out to each of the schools for anything that isn't school-specific is that we're somehow trying to reinvent for the board's purposes networks that already exist. If we're going to do a linkage with sped parents, why should we not just go to the sped parents ETSA at the district level, which meets once a month in the district offices, admittedly on Tuesday? But I, I don't feel a need to go out to each building to listen to sped. Rather, I would go to the organization that represents sped District One.
I only missed one of them.
I think that's totally fair. And I think so, so I think those are some of those specific logistics. I think the big picture piece is we're saying, yes, we want to. Are these themes okay in dealing with the equity piece, right?
Yes.
And being able to build that?
Yes, we want to what? Sorry. I just want to make sure.
Hold these events so that they can get planned.
Yeah. So I, I agree with that. I do want to, before we close out this discussion, come back to, I think that I, I do agree very much that equity and opportunity is an important theme. But making it the only theme for the year, I think is a missed opportunity for the first year of a new superintendent. We should have at least some of these be focused on innovation.
And that could be the same thing. Absolutely.
Oh, I'm disputing that. I agree. But have, innovation should be involved in the title or in the concept of some of the linkages.
No, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. That, that, I mean, the challenge right now is we, we have four. I mean, if I were to look actually at a board plan, your goal is that you're doing some type of connection every month in some way. But also recognize the challenge with that piece. So we were hoping at least getting four on and maybe we upload upfront those a little more if possible, like you mentioned, Chris. As opposed to waiting so long. But Eric, I saw your hand go up.
I was actually about to say, Chris changed my mind a little bit, so I'm thinking about it. I mean, I was going to say this should, that this should be, that equity work should be the focus of the board for this year. Maybe even exclusively, but I'm kind of, I'm kind of kicking around Chris's point. Let me think for a little bit longer. Okay, I'm, I'm done thinking. I do, so again, I'm just, again, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the, I, I, I agree that John in his first year should be thinking about innovation. But again, when I'm thinking about the work of the board, you know, I do, I do think, you know, again, if we're staying at a policy level, I think that, I do think, I really think that our focus this year should be on equity. And I, I, I do support, what am I, Siri? I, I do want us to focus, I, I want us to focus exclusively on, on equity for these linkages this year. And I want, I, my, my preference would be for our work plan for this year to almost exclusively focus on that, or to have that predominantly focused on. So I know that's different what Chris just said, but that's, that's my thinking right now.
You know, I, to get back to the idea that if equity isn't interwoven into everything we do, so equity and innovation aren't exclusive of one another. Because you can ask a question around innovation that talks about how are our innovative programs excluding specific students and what are those gaps? And so there's ways also to, as we maintain an equity theme, continue to weave in the other ideals and values of the board.
Yeah, that's, that's broadly what I was thinking, John. I mean, when it comes to innovation, there is an equity dimension to participation in our quest programs. There is an equity dimension to the ability to use distance learning, what we've learned from that in the course of this year. So, but Eric, actually, I'm going to give you props and say, yeah, I, I, I think your point is well taken. That the focus of the board does not have to be the focus of the district simultaneously. The district can focus on multiple things and should be, it's not as if we're dropping everything to focus on one. As far as the board's outreach, I think you make a reasonable point. And I could actually get behind making equity our outreach topic for the year. It seems very timely.
So I'm going to see if I can capture what I believe the board interest is as a whole. Is to use our study session time on Monday nights to have four targeted linkages. That the, really the theme of our linkage for the school year will be around opportunity and equity. And that will shift for each of the evenings, the specific groups that we're engaging with. And we will be very explicit about the ties to the questions that are being asked, to the values and policy of the board. And so I will, I see two people right now and they both gave a somewhat head nod and I got, I see a third.
So I assume it's Chris and I don't know who else doesn't have a.
Chris and Mark. I, I didn't hear from our C, but I, that's, I think I captured the interest of the board.
We have a few raised hands, so I'm not sure if you just didn't put your hand down. I can't figure out if her hands down on mine. So Chris or Mark, you have something to say?
Actually, I.
We're going to let Mark go first, then you, Chris, okay?
We had talked about having a 90-minute session. So unless we're going to start it, everything a little later, we also talked about the problematic of four to five. So again, that's only a 60-minute meeting as opposed to the 90 that we thought would be more appropriate. So I'm grappling with how in the world are you going to have all of that timeframe? Unless you cut the, the actual board business meeting to a minimum, I mean, a very minimum, and have the linkage after the board meeting.
Yeah, that was.
This is just logistics.
Yeah, it was flipping the board meeting and study session so that the board, the study session, which then would be the linkage, would follow the board meeting. So we'd essentially have an early board meeting and a, and a subsequent linkage.
Only other thing is.
Also allows you, I think, going well.
If there is a way to move them a little earlier in the process so that we can utilize that information, so almost finish it in the first half of the year so that we can use that information in the second half of the year in which to feed on. Potentially saying, you know what, actually, we need a little more. And I'm just, over the whole year, I think might be too far apart when really we want to bring it a little closer together.
And so if we scheduled September, October, November, December, one a month?
Makes sense.
Maybe not December. People are really busy, but I leave that to you.
So somewhere between, yeah, December, January, February, we'll get four in, so it's kind of front-loading for the board.
And I was just thinking, if we front-load that information, that helps us in which to go forward. You know, as Chris had mentioned, that the students were so far at the end, you know, as a way to front-load some of these. So we use that information going forward.
Yeah, great.
Well, and that's, that's one where I think we, the students, I think it's worth us going to them, which actually means that it's four separate ones, the four high schools. And so that might be something where we spread four of them out across the year and then there are three other sessions devoted to the other topics.
True. I do think with Students Virtual is going to be a great option to work with.
Yeah, sorry, you're right. Okay.
And at one point, there was discussion of having, I was, as we were looking at how to do Student Voice and different things, and there was discussion of potentially having, you know, a staff member who's helping to really just set those up. And there was some discussion to Matt Monabianco, actually, when we were talking, to help facilitate those and set those up in which for us to be able to have those discussions and be able to do that so that, I'll just toss that back out. I hope that was a great idea.
I'm, I'm sure Matt is watching right now and.
So there just might be a student piece
Oh, yeah.
that might be a little different as what it, that, that is virtual in the way it's done and that we are pulling. Because the one big piece on the work plan, and this is a little off-topic and I apologize, although I think it goes to the linkage, but it's because it's trying to say, how do we set up a continual linkage process with our students more effectively? Both at the, I mean, this was a frustration, honestly, I saw with the task force and the work groups, even for the return to learn, was I didn't hear Student Voice coming through those. And they weren't at the table and they should be. Because we have incredibly talented and brilliant students that can bring a lot of voice and we need to start building it into what we do as a practice. Not an afterthought.
Yeah. Okay. Do we, next topic of the work plan, do we want to talk about policy? Professional learning of the board? What's the next natural topic for us to, to discuss?
Right before we go there, let me just confirm, nobody else had anything else to say to finalize up the linkages? Because I still see a few hands, so I just want to confirm we can wrap that.
I do.
Mark, you have something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that as we're, especially as we're focusing on equity and we're trying to put as many meetings front-loaded up in the front of the school year, that we watch all the various holidays. Because God forbid you'd have something on focused on equity on a major holiday for a major religion. That would really kind of be self-defeating, if you will.
Thank you. It is always a constant reminder.
And Cassandra, I think your hand was up. Did you have something to add?
No, I'm sorry. I can't see my hand up on my own screen.
Okay, and I can't put it down on mine, so we're working well together. All right, so John, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, my.
I just wanted to make sure to wrap that up.
Yeah, thank you. My, I think two other pieces around the work plan. Policy work that we want to do. We are going to continue the equity policy work that Gloria has been, been engaged with over the year. Her work is really around administrative policy. And so we'll make sure to bring that to the board so you're understanding the work that's gone on. Plus, you see a draft of the policy that, that Gloria is going to then take out to community to get feedback on. That's kind of the process that she has set up. And I wonder, is there, is there any policy work related to equity that the board wants to do around the operational expectations? Just to make sure that that value and really that expectation is called out explicitly for the organization.
So Cassandra, I saw your hand jump.
I don't want to put more work on Gloria if she has a, a different focus, but I, I do feel like I need, I feel like I could use more guidance and I could use more learning. I understand that her role is administrative, but I really feel like as a board member, I, I could really value from interacting with her more and understanding more.
And is that a preface to then being able to think about the policy work?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And could you, could you just talk a little bit more about when you say interacting with her, hearing from her, learning from her? Do you have specifics under that? Or is it just kind of a, a general, how does racial equity and the equity work play out in a school district? What are systems that are historically, you know, not supporting stu? I'm just curious as to what you're thinking about.
Again, I don't want to throw a whole bunch of extra work on her plate, but I feel that she is the expert here. So I would defer to what she thinks in her role she could help the board with. And, you know, she had been setting up the equity training for us and it sounded like substantial training. I mean, two full days and reading and, I guess I want to make sure that I, as a board member, understand the work that she is doing and what might help us from a policy perspective, support the work that she is doing, which I don't feel I currently have complete knowledge about, certainly don't have complete knowledge about.
Okay. And so I, I see these two things tied very tightly together. And so that's why I appreciate the comment around professional learning to actually inform the policy work, so.
So we had developed a draft OE, Operational Expectation, around equity at one point. And Mark brought up at the beginning of this meeting, actually, when you went over those values, about a statement on equity and a value statement based on that. And I think there's a lot to be said about being much more explicit. But I do think there is a lot of learning we as a board need to do. And Gloria can provide some of that. I think we ourselves have a lot we need to do, even just on our own and as a group to hold this discussion. And I think trying to form a policy and making sure it's informed by, and incorporates and brings to the table all the voices involved in being able to do so, I think that. So as I see an administrative policy, at the same time, I think there's potentially a board policy that whether we choose to weave it, which can be, or we choose to pull it out and call it. It was similar to when technology came about, honestly. We pulled out a technology OE because that was viewed as an important value right now at this point in time that we want to highlight. And we want to ensure that this is being held within our organization. So I believe we actually should have a board policy that states around an operation, around equity, so that it is clearly stated right now at this point in time. And we had planned to, I mean, it was in the works two years ago as well. So it's there, we're in, but we haven't done the additional work needed by us to all come to agreement to where it goes, as well as to bring it out to the community, similar to Gloria's, to the process on the admin. Would this hold at this level as well? Because that is the community, we are reflecting community values within those board values.
I, I just want to say I, I agree with everything Siri just said. Second, I second what Siri just said.
I think the other thing to Mark's point as well, a statement from the board is, people are really looking to the board for what does, board and district leadership, you know, what does Lake Washington stand for? And the, the most effective way the board can voice that is to say, here is our policy related to it and here is what we are monitoring within the system to know that our expectation for the organization is being met. And so I agree that, that that's, that would be a very powerful, it would be very powerful to adopt a policy. And I like the idea of working towards that and really building the capacity of the board so that when, once you do adopt it, it's based on this experience and learning that you've gone through to be able to apply to a policy.
I think Mark had his hand up.
Well, I agree that we have a lot to learn. That's, that was unquestioned. I also would hate to see us. I also would hate to see us, um, whoops, I would hate to see us wait so long for our learning process, the community would think we're ignoring this. I think even if we have a statement of equity that covers, uh, as, as much as we already know at this point, you know, it's Gloria's hill, uh, we could have one up and running within a month, uh, just so we have one. Not saying it's all encompassing necessarily, and now as broad as maybe we'd like to have it, but I think we need to have it sooner than later. I think that's an important thing to our community at this point.
Can I ask a question? Is that, um, was that language of a statement already made at, uh, the board meeting? Siri read a statement from the board, uh, a couple of meetings ago. Is, is the language there already and it's just making sure that it's in a format that's available in a, in a location that's available? Or are you thinking of something different, Mark?
No, I, to be quite frank, I, if we, uh, if that statement that we had a couple of months ago, and I'm sorry, I'm blanking, I don't, remembering the entire thing, or I'll just say this, any of it, um, I would say then, if that's our policy, if that's our statement for equity, then smack it on top of the, uh, front page of the, uh, of the website, put it out there so everyone can see it. Uh, send it out to various, uh, the parent pages, uh, from the various schools and the various, uh, parent pages that are, uh, multi-school, just so everyone sees we have it. Uh, and remind them that, you know, this was that ex-board meeting, folks have, uh, said we don't have one, but it's there, and this is what we try to live by, um, and I think that would preclude, uh, having to come up with a really a new one, to be quite frank.
Um, I do not believe our statement would be, I would view it as an equity statement in regards, I think it was very specific in regards to the environment and where we, in the context and being able to speak to that directly. Part of that was-
Again, I don't remember.
...have a clear equity policy in which to be able to speak to the value that was defined there. Um, and so that gave us the opportunity to be able to do so and be able to speak to it. Um, so, whereas I, I under, the, the piece of developing the, it is the process of developing the policy and getting through and speaking to those values and having those conversations, which is where we get the strength and what comes from that and being ensure that we're presenting the community values and our values within that. Um, so I do think having our linkage focus on that and that with a piece of that, that, that's all feeding into it, and then you bring these to it. So we have a draft concept you have to work with, and then we, we bring it back out and speak to people about what goes on. We started an equity value statement on the past OE policy, I'd have to go look what it was that we had drafted initially. Um, I remember sitting in our work sessions and having conversations around that statement as to what that means. I think we would possibly say different things, or at least height, have different priority or focus within that statement if we were to review that again at this point in time, because I think we as a board are in a different place than we were at that point. Um, and our community is as well. So I think those are the things that we just need to do. So I think working towards an equity statement is absolutely valuable and needs to be done. I'm hesitant to do it in a quick, fast motion, because I do think this is about the conversation and the process, not necessarily just the end point.
I think we also learned from some of our neighboring districts that have gone through some of this work already and had to hit the reset button, that process is a key part because we also, we also want our community to know that, uh, that our work is for all students and, and our equity work is focused on our most marginalized students, uh, ensuring that our systems are supporting them and that we are working towards, uh, you know, an equitable school system. And so, uh, you know, we know, when, when we started those discussions around an equity policy, we heard from a number of our community members, actually expressing concern about what an equity policy would do to their child. So I think that's where the process piece helps, helps people to understand what is the intent of the policy, what is the intent of this work, uh, so that, uh, they're brought along in the journey.
Other views in regard to equity policy, no statement? Do you remember our past work with the equity policy?
Is that to the board or to me?
That was to the board. I don't know.
No, I don't. Do I remember our past work?
Mm-hmm.
No, but I don't, I mean, I don't remember.
Because I'm not sure Cassandra was on the board at the time.
I'm reasonably confident that I do remember it. Don't think we, that gives us an excuse to not revisit it.
I recall being part of the closing the opportunity gap and the reading that went along with that and the discussions around, how do we actually affect change? Having read some of these things, having seen data from our own district, gap data, the data we've been getting since the school closure on the gaps analysis has been extremely helpful to me as a board member to understand how things are changing in almost real time. So yes, I've been part of it, I haven't been part of all of it.
I think the other thing that professional learning and just kind of that ongoing dialogue around equity provides for the board is every time then you're monitoring the district, you are asking, you're starting to think about different types of questions that you might ask related to equity, knowing that here's a set of data, and that set of data always has an and associated with it, and we need to make sure we ask the and question and that we're paying attention to, uh, how the system is, uh, functioning or how it's functioning for some but not all, and if it's not all, then what are we doing about that? And that's, but that goes for all of the monitoring, uh, that the board does, and that is what the, you know, equity professional learning does, is it just continues to build out, uh, kind of a mindset and a framework for all of us to do our work with kind of that lens on, making sure that we're paying attention to those things. So I, that's, I like the idea of, uh, uh, working with Gloria to kind of build out a plan for the board, uh, around this, while we're doing the linkages, while we're packaging some of the, uh, statement, some policy, things like that, um, that would go alongside of it. I think I've also heard from the board that you're interested in actually participating in the PEG training that was scheduled for this spring, and will you remind me, was everyone scheduled to participate in that or just some of the board?
I can just speak for myself, I, I was unable to attend when it was previously scheduled. I, I wanted to attend. I think there was interest from all of the board, I think maybe it didn't line up with all of our schedules.
I know I was signed up, I just, I think we were just, by the time the meetings were ha- due to happen, COVID.
Right.
Right, right.
And I know there was some talk that the PEG also has a board-related specific one, um, that's specific to boards and the work of boards, so. But I do think there was, I, ours was involved, the idea was that we'd be doing it with district staff as well, is what I do remember, so.
Yeah, and I know Gloria is working with them to figure out what that looks like moving forward. Uh, I believe they're packaging it to be a remote experience, while not the same experience as being in the same room and dialoguing and seeing one another in that space. It, uh, I think they're trying to put something together because they are, there's a number of, of districts across the country expressing interest. But I will also ask Gloria about that board training as well, because that may be a, a nice, uh, second step for the board to take after that initial training.
I think that was the thought, potentially.
Okay. As we get into a more typical pattern of study sessions, uh, this last year, it, well, this last year, it, it felt like before closure, the focus really was around policy, and we spent many, many study sessions talking about, you know, OEs and as, all of those were being updated, and rightfully so, we needed to spend that time. Are there specific topics that the board felt like they didn't hear about last year that are topics that we want to make sure we get back into the room for more consistent updates? Uh, one that kind of comes to mind is special education, that it, we've typically done a special education update maybe twice a year, where we bring the team in and they really put together, uh, kind of a robust review of the work of the, the department and, and whatnot. So are there other topics that we want to make sure that we're thinking about during this, uh, upcoming school year?
Eric?
Um, I mean, I know this won't be on our plan, but facilities, it's worth saying, um, just to make sure. Um, no, it's kind of an interesting time now, for the first time in a while, we actually don't, I mean, we don't have a space problem for the last three months, but, um, you know, that'll last as long as we're not actually in schools.
And, and with the facilities, I would, I would like to encourage that it's not an update of what we're currently doing, um, it is really looking forward as to what are those different ways in which we could provide learning environments, um, be they virtual, be they different types of buildings, be they, so really trying to do more of the future planning, because what's coming is coming in the great, you can put that in the board brief, but how do we vision where we're going to be in five to 10 years? Because that's the difference.
It would personally help me understand, um, more of the gaps during closure if we heard more often from special education students. I know my own student at home is doing all right, because we're working our tails off and we're exhausted and we cannot maintain this level of, you know, educating him to this degree, so I would, I would like to even know where his gaps are, the things that I didn't see that, ah, this is actually an area we need to focus on.
So that lends itself to having conversations and, you know, that's the hearing of the, so there is a, I guess for next year, that another piece is, and could be the summer, and I know you're doing this through thought exchanges and different things, but how do we, where are our lessons learned from what happened? Um, and it's, and I'm pretty sure you have it, I mean, that's been the focus of what's being done, I think we've had some of that. Um, and so just making sure that feeds back to us as well.
You know, I, uh, I'm predicting that a number of our study sessions will also, uh, at the very beginning of the year, have at least part or whole focused on returning to school and what that looks like and, you know, depending on where we are as a county and as a state and all of those things.
And so what would be great with those is really have a thought as, what is it up from the board that we are looking for from that? If it's providing information, that's one thing, and there's multiple ways to do it, but what is the decision point or the direction that's being requested or in the presenting of that information?
Yep.
So I, Eric, I don't know about Mark or Chris, I can't, as I said, I hate my-
I can wait my turn on somebody else.
Nope, you're good, Eric then Cassandra, unless Cassandra's hand's not really up.
So, um, I, one, I mean, our biggest job as a board is, is monitoring the performance of the district and evaluating that. Um, all of the indicators that we have used for the last several years are not going to tell us anything for a while now, I don't think. I mean, nothing next year and probably not a whole lot the year after. Um, and if we're really going to evaluate, um, the superintendent's performance at the end of the year, uh, we need to talk about how we're going to do that ahead of time so that the district, I mean, we need to do that this summer, I think even, so that, so that that's set. Um, I think that's, you know, um, there's not, there's probably not, there's not going to be standardized testing next year, most likely, well, who knows? But I think it's unlikely that any, that any of the, any of the things that we've looked at before will, will tell us anything for a while.
So Chris, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, um, so I, I, I agree with Eric that we do need to make sure that we've got the, the framework for evaluation, um, as a, as a topic early, earlier rather than later, because this is unusual circumstances. Uh, I actually, John, you had asked about other, other things of interest, and the one that I'm not sure I recall getting to this last year was evaluation of the changes that have been made to the Quest programs, uh, whether it's introduction of the K through two level, or, uh, really the evaluation of how our push-in programs are working relative to pull-out programs.
Great.
And Mark?
Well, I think what we need to, uh, do is, we're, we keep talking about having these inclusion, uh, uh, classes, and we're still in an infancy stage, if you will, with it, uh, to, the more we do pull out, uh, the less we're doing inclusion, it sounds like to me. Uh, um, that's all I really have to say. I, I think we need to make sure that we have an ability to, uh, to do the, uh, assessments, uh, as everyone's mentioned before, so, and the more clear they are, the better they'll be for, uh, for John, to be quite frank, it, uh, when we do assessments without a whole lot of, uh, clarity to it, uh, that's nothing good for us, it's nothing good for the district, it's nothing good for John.
So Mark, can you just clarify for me? I'm sorry, assessments? I'm not sure what you're speaking to.
Well, we talked about, well, we talked about, uh, assessing the, uh, uh, the performance of, uh, of staff.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, in particular, you know, your, I think the idea was the expectations and, uh, how he lives up to the OE, or OEs and so forth. Is that, does that make sense to you?
Yep, no, thank you, I was just trying, I was, had student assessments, is what I was thinking, so I was a little confused, so I appreciate that.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. Well, I was thinking along what, uh, Eric and Chris were talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and those are things that we've been thinking about and looking at some assessment programs to actually help us with some level of monitoring for the board, so that there's a consistent set of data, even though it's not the same data that we've used in the past. That's one of the reasons to delay the results a little bit next year, so that we can get things actually put into place and actually bring back a recommendation for what the data would look like. And, uh, so yeah, that's work that's ongoing right now.
So then the other pieces, you put these, as I'm thinking, if we're going to have a linkage that's going to work with inclusion, then that would make sense to tie, that maybe we have information about where we're at currently in the district, and it ties to this linkage piece, so that we have that sort of feedback in as well. So how do we connect these pieces up between the community component of that would be beneficial?
Yeah. So I know, just so that we're all aware, you know, other topics that will be on the agenda this year, uh, boundary process, uh, because we have schools in Kirkland that are, uh, you know, adding, so, you know, we're currently working through the analysis of that. We also don't know with the closure and, you know, what that's going to look like, and does that need to be implemented, uh, for 21, 22, or can that be delayed for a year? So those are things we're analyzing right now. The other piece that Barbara reminded me of was really, uh, any funding measure that we want on a ballot, uh, actually the end of this school year is when we start that work. And so we're starting to build that, build out those processes, procedures, and that's, you know, obviously the board plays a significant- you know, obviously the board plays a significant role in that. So that's work that will be on the agenda as well for the year.
And that then aligns well with the idea about facilities and that component and bringing that through. So that's just sort of the culmination of that sort of piece.
Yeah, yeah. I think those tie nicely together. So honestly, I think I have what I need from the board to package something together for the year. And, you know, as we know, as we go through the year, if we need to make modifications and adjustments, that's, we can do that. And I know it also helps staff, myself, to have a pretty thorough plan going into the year so that we can build our work schedules around those things, so that we're doing the work that's identified in the work plan to the highest degree possible, so. Siri, is there any, anything else we want to discuss today?
For the end of the work plan for this year, we have talked about, and I just wanted to confirm, of doing two meetings in July? And we haven't actually put those dates on, I don't believe, correct?
Correct.
So I want to confirm with the board that that is something that we still want to do. Well, and actually, the first one in July needs to happen. But we have to say what those actual dates are.
I thought they were on our calendars already.
Did we already?
I don't believe so.
I don't either.
I think there was just that one homework piece we hadn't done. So this is, you know, it's just housekeeping, that's the word I'm looking for, a housekeeping piece. So if you can, do you have a calendar in front of you, John?
Yep, I'm just pulling it up.
Thank you.
Real quick, I think we should meet in July. I have no idea what my schedule is going to be in July. We have another child coming in the beginning of July, so we'll, you know, I'll do my best to attend whatever we schedule, but I, we'll have to see.
At this point, we will still likely be virtual. Well, who knows? Right, it's been extended now. The other component with, what I will say, depending and as to where we're at with the whole COVID, if people need to attend virtually, we can set that up as well. So that will always be an option for what we need to do for anybody, if there's any reason you can't come out or you have concerns for your health or any of the above.
That does raise a question. So, you know, right now we are meeting virtually remotely. If King County were to move into phase three, would that, would those guidelines permit in-person meetings and, you know?
I believe we're actually held to remote because of the governor's proclamation around the Open Public Meetings Act, requires that we stay in a virtual environment right now and meet only remotely. So once the governor removes that, then we can make decisions as to what we need to do based on the phase in which our county is in. Am I correct, John?
Yes, yes.
So right now, I mean, when we're talking about July, we should, I mean, we should be thinking that it is going to be remote, almost certainly for everyone. Okay, great.
Most likely, but we're not 100% sure.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would propose the following dates for meetings, July 13 and 27.
And when's the August meeting?
August is the 10th.
Perfect, so that just sets it up right in between. And that gives a good timeframe.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
That work for everybody? So the idea there, there's also one thing, just, my understanding is there is likely to be a legislative session potentially in August. There was a request from neighboring district that potentially we might want to move up our legislative priority process a little bit in order to be able to potentially address that legislative session more effectively. So that might be something to think about for July in the sense of the agenda that we might want to add that piece. Just tossing that out. Usually we do that in August, is usually where we begin, so we're set for the assembly. This would just bump it a month. We don't usually have meetings in July, so that gives that possibility as well.
It makes sense.
And if we're remote, I'm going to make the assumption that we'll just do the board meeting as we have for the last couple of months without a study session and just a board meeting and any content that we need that is more study session-like, we just build into the board meeting?
I'm not sure, that's a good question. Thoughts?
Didn't, I thought I heard something on the WASTA call that we can now continue with study sessions and things that are non-essential during the school closure?
Yes, they did remove the require that it had to be essential and related.
Okay, okay.
But I don't think they've removed the remote requirement yet.
They did not remove.
No, no, we're not allowed to meet in person yet.
Mark has his hand up, hold it.
Mark?
It would seem that if you, if you're willing to put together our legislative agenda, that the study sessions for July would be really, that'd be the perfect opportunity to do so.
I would like to just go back to study session and board meeting. I find it a little, from combining them has made it a little complicated to really sort of separate out some of that more, we're just going in depth on a topic and doing it on the diets, so.
Great, I agree.
Hi.
Eric?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, what's the, I'm kind of curious, I mean, what's the difference? I mean, I can't, for the last two months, I've never known when we're in a study session versus when we're in a board, I mean, it's all, it's all the same, I'm sitting in the same chair, I'm wearing the same, you know, what's the difference? But fine. It's all broadcast the same way, am I right? I mean...
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and currently, that is the question. We did shift to be broadcasting everything, and so it was all within a board meeting. And so there was a decision made in our policies that states that you, that we do broadcast and tape our board meetings. It does not say we do that for our study sessions. It says we can and we may, but it is not a mandate within our, it's not a must. So when we made the shift by having everything in the board meeting with that, we just videotape it all and it's all available that way. So the question is if we want to go forward, videotaping the study sessions as well as our board meetings.
I think if we're remote, we're still required to broadcast the study sessions, that's my understanding, because it's the only way, whether it's just by phone or, but there has to be some way for the community to participate if they want. And so if we are remote, we're still in this method, if you will. It's, once we're able to meet in person, then that decision needs to be made.
Yeah, I agree.
So Diane, Diane doesn't usually put her hand up, that's why I'm curious.
If you're talking about doing a study session, board meeting, are you talking about doing a five o'clock study session and then a seven o'clock board meeting? So that's a consideration.
In July?
Yes, in July.
I actually think I would be tempted, if we were going to do a study session, to do it after the board meeting.
So five o'clock board meeting, seven o'clock study session?
I like that, I like that, yeah, I like that.
I was hoping, Maury, you do a five o'clock board meeting that will then just run into the study session and it can start whenever it needs to by the end of the board meeting. The board meeting, I feel you, there's a much harder start time than a study session. So that's my...
Yep.
All right, raised my hand again.
Now, and you weren't muted, Diane, I could hear you, go ahead.
Diane, did you have a comment?
Diane, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, Diane.
Sorry, thank you. You have to state the time you're going to start the meetings for public. So you can't just, you can't just run one meeting into another, you have to state, so.
Okay.
So Diane, for your notes, I think what I'm hearing is we'll do a five o'clock board meeting and a seven o'clock study session.
How about a six o'clock study session?
Right, you can start a, you can start a meeting later, you just can't start a meeting sooner. So you could start the board meeting at five o'clock and start the study session at six. We just can't, you can start later, you just can't start earlier.
Great, thank you. Eric was being very optimistic about our board meetings going for 60 minutes.
Oh, I was just going to say that I think having our study sessions broadcast allows the community to hear what they might not normally be able to hear if they had to drive all the way into the building, and I think that's of great value.
So it sounds like we're good for the July, we'll set those two up, we'll do a five o'clock board meeting followed by a study session. And those agendas will be forthcoming. That will also just be continuing as we do the return to school. That'll be the other key thing that we're able to build into those, to be able to hold those discussions as things come up and guidance comes out and the different things occur. So that gives us a little more flexibility to do that. Anything else?
Okay.
Then we are done 15 minutes prior.
Jane's goal is to go as long as possible? I don't know.
On Monday night, we could be, it could be through midnight.
That is true, yeah, that is true, so. Okay, well, I think I got what I needed. I will start working on the work plan so that we can review in August and get that adopted and move forward.
And ideally then that'll be put up and it's, then we all know how that year is playing out and we'll pull out the, you know, the budget will get added into there, all the big sort of decisions and things that really have to have board attention, as well as then our priorities going through there as well.
Right, great, okay.
Great.
Thank you so much, everyone. No, I don't have anything.
All right, well, thank you all, appreciate your taking the morning. And we're moving forward, see you Monday.
Happy Father's Day to our fathers.
That's right, Happy Father's Day.
All right, thank you.
Good day to you too. Bye.
Thank you.